Go up to 8A. And we're going to talk a little bit about Mrs. Craven. I believe you wanted to talk about.
No, this is the ranch.
I'm sorry, we're going to move up the Camrio Ranch Agreement. It's 8A. It's the use of the Camrio Ranch Agreement. Do we have a staff report on that?
I have so many little gadgets here in front of me. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This report is in reference, excuse me, in reference to the proposed agreement regarding the use of Camrio Ranch with the Camrio Ranch Foundation. This entire property is located, which is located at 201 Camrio Ranch Road, is outlined on the aerial here before you and is referred throughout this presentation as the property, which includes the ranch house, the barn, the stables, which are used as office space and storage, the grounds and gardens and other amenities on this parcel. Under past agreements and the current operating agreement, the foundation was selected by the City Council to preserve and maintain the property as a historic site and to transform it to a focal point of the community. The foundation has been successful in doing so by providing historical and educational enrichment activities, including tours of the property and activities led by the docents. The foundation also hosts community events, offering a place for community gathering, and has made the property a popular venue for wedding and private events. The foundation has also made several restoration improvements to the property. In addition to fundraising, membership revenue and donations, the foundation's revenue includes revenue from the licensing of the property for weddings and events. Among other event-related revenue, the foundation receives a venue rental fee where the client pays 50% of the venue rental fee to reserve the venue, referred herein as a deposit, and the balance of the fee is payable at least 90 days of, before the event. Under the current operating agreement, the city is responsible for maintaining the exterior of the home, barn, accessory structures, and parking areas on the property, including capital projects. The foundation is responsible for the interior refurbishing and maintenance of the home, barn, accessory structures, and to provide appropriate furnishings. The foundation has been maintaining the grounds and fence, utilities, and providing for other operational needs. In April of this year, the city received a request by the foundation that it form an ad hoc committee to meet with its task force to discuss the current operating agreement and determine whether a change to the current agreement could be achieved. The foundation's task force was concerned that the foundation could not meet its original goal of self-sufficiency with the recent changes in the event business and the increasing costs of maintaining the property. There were several meetings between this period and when staff returned to the City Council on June 17th with options and a recommendation from the ad hoc committee. The City Council did not approve the recommendation on that evening. Rather, the council directed that the ad hoc committee continue discussions with the foundation's task force. And at that meeting, the foundation board president submitted a 90-day letter of termination, which was later extended to October 31st. So out of subsequent discussions, a new business model was formed in which the city would take on maintenance and operations, maintenance and operation obligations, including the event business of the property as a funding mechanism. And this allowed the foundation to focus on its cultural, historical, and educational aspects of its nonprofit work. Because the city lacks expertise in the wedding and event management business, staff sought a contractor through a request for proposal process. On October 9th, the City Council approved an agreement with Command Performance to provide wedding and special event management services. On October 10th, the ad hoc committee met with the foundation task force and finalized pending provisions of a new agreement, which you have before you tonight. And on October 15th, at the Camrio Ranch Foundation's special meeting, the board approved the proposed agreement. Mr. Perick will discuss the proposed agreement and lay out some of the provisions within that agreement, so I'll pass it to him.
Perick.
So you will find the agreement in your packet at big page 14. That's an agreement regarding the use of Camrio Ranch. The parties to this agreement are the city and the Camrio Ranch Foundation. The term is November 1 through December 31 of 2025 unless terminated earlier, or I should add, it could also be extended by an amendment to the agreement if we wanted to do that as well, assuming is mutually agreeable between the city and the foundation. The termination, that should say termination of the agreement, can be by mutual consent or if there's a breach of the agreement, or upon 90 days' notice to either party. So what you see here is the, from Section 3, this is the use of the property by the foundation, and that includes the preservation of the house, to provide for the property to be a focal point of the community, to sponsor community events, and they would retain any funds raised as a result of that. Commercial filming and photography, and again, any monies that were to be received from that activity would be retained by the foundation. The office space is agreed. There's a floor plan, which is attached as Exhibit B, and I'll go to that slide. And you can see here in the lower right corner, the legend, where the yellow is for the contractor's use, that would be Command Performance, and then the foundation is in purple, and then there's the joint use in green with the foundation and the city. Then back to the uses I left off on E, on office space. F is for rental events, such as weddings, would be governed by Sections 4 and 5. Since this agreement begins now on November 1, there's only a few wedding events between now and November 1 and other events. The ranch would, the foundation would continue to maintain the Camrio Ranch Foundation website. There would be access to the ranch house, except when there's a city-licensed event. They would continue to raise funds through donations and membership, and they would coordinate the use of the property with the city. This is Section 4. This relates to the use of the foundation for the ranch for rental events. This conversation has been going on for now a number of months, and originally, it was thought that this period governed by Section 4 would be a longer period of time, but now we're here on October 23rd, and there's only eight days between now and November 1. So what you see here is a relative, a short period of time when this Section 4 would be in operation. So for the use by the foundation through October 31, it would be for rental events, subject to compliance with the same requirements as in the operating agreement, same thing with regard to limitations. The revenue from those rental events, they would retain the deposits for which a license had been issued through October 31, regardless of the date of the event. So if the foundation has booked an event that, for example, is not going to take place until January of 2020, the foundation would retain the deposit, the 50%, that had been received previously. The foundation would also receive the balance of the fee for rental events, which take place prior to November 1, which had been licensed by the foundation. So the foundation, for example, I believe there's an event coming up soon before November 1, that they would receive the, both the deposit and the balance of the fee for that. So for the rental events occurring after November 1, the city will be responsible for providing all those services, and the city would receive the balance of the fee and any commissions. As you heard from Carmen earlier, the city, and as you all know, the city has entered into a contract with Command Performance, so it would be Command Performance that would be responsible for putting on those events. The foundation will have access to the bridal suite for rental events prior to November 1 and would be responsible for the cleaning of the bridal suite through that date. This is Section 5. This is used by the city, can be used in any manner that does not conflict with the foundation's use, and that beginning on November 1, only the city may, or its designee may license rental events. The city or its designee would provide services for those rental events, and the city would retain the deposit and balance for those fees. Section C here, this is the reciprocal provision to the coordination provision for the foundation. The city would agree to coordinate its use of the property with the foundation. Section 6, this is the maintenance and operating expenses. So what you see here on the screen are the maintenance and operating expenses for the period through November 1. Again, this now is only a relatively short period of time. And these obligations with regards to the maintenance, and you heard earlier from Carmen with respect to the, what the operating agreement provides, and that's what you're seeing here again. So through November 1, it would be continuing as it has been under the operating agreement. Same with the city, through November 1, the city would continue to be responsible for what we had been responsible for before. Now, this slide is what happens after November 1. The foundation would be responsible for movable furnishings within the ranch house, the preservation of historical artifacts, pictures, documents, and accoutrements, the cleaning of the interior of the house, except for the bridal suite, and the costs associated with the use of the property of the foundation. The city's responsibilities beginning November 1 will be the maintenance of the interior and exterior of all structures on the property, except for the foundation's responsibilities up here. The city would be responsible for the maintenance of all landscaping, grounds, and parking lots, for the maintenance and cost for all utilities, for the custodial services, for all the structures, except for the cleaning of the interior of the house, and for the alarm service for the property. There are some additional terms to the agreement. These are very similar to what's in the operating agreement. Section 7 is on capital improvements. The city would continue to be responsible for capital improvements. There are annual reports that would be required from the foundation to the city. That's in Section 8. Section 8 would also provide for the, the city would be contracting at city expense for an annual audit of the foundation and the preparation of the tax returns. Section 9 goes to the entry on the property that the city manager can authorize. Section 10, the ownership of the property, this confirms that the real property, that the foundation will not have ownership in the real property, but for the movable furnishings, those will remain the property of the foundation. And finally, Section 21, the operating agreement will be terminated as of November 1, when this agreement for the use of the property becomes effective. So the suggested action this evening is to authorize the city manager to execute the proposed agreement regarding use of the Camrio Ranch after the agreement has been executed by the foundation. We heard earlier that the foundation did approve this agreement at their meeting earlier this month.
Okay, are there any questions or comments at this time, Mrs. Craven?
The foundation had several, there were really minor changes, language changes they requested. Have those been incorporated in this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have any speaker cards, Ms. Madeline, on this? Thank you.
I probably have more speakers.
All right, first we have Jerry Olson with us tonight. Jerry, let me turn the microphone on, Jerry, if you would, and three minutes, if you would. Okay, we're live. If you want to move that down, Jerry, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Jerry Olson. I live at 861 Durkin Street in Camrio. I've been a Camrio resident since 1960, and I've served on the Board of Directors of the Camrio Ranch Foundation now for 20-plus years. I want to speak in support of the new agreement with the city. It's a great step in the right direction. It'll be of tremendous help to us, and I also want to thank all, and I mean all, who worked so hard on this, making this happen, including the city manager and all the staff from the city. That's the end of my remarks. Thank you very much. Again, it's a great step in the right direction.
Jerry, I want to personally thank you for all your years of service there.
It was a lot of fun, I'll tell you that.
That's a yeoman's task. Appreciate it.
There's been a lot of change.
Yeah.
I too would like to thank Jerry. He was one of the very original board members, and he's never stopped. There's not been a pause. Thank you. And I know, at the beginning, it was a lot of hard work, and I think that might have added to the fun.
Yeah. Myself and Susanna Reader, both are original members of the board.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you again, Jerry. Okay, Ms. Madeline, anybody? Okay. Yeah, come on in. Evening.
I am Sandy Nierenberg. I live at 1107 Truano Avenue in Camrio. And I am a member of the Board of Directors of the Camrio Ranch Foundation, a very short-term member. I've only been on the board for a couple of years. I've been serving as a volunteer general manager for the foundation since the end of June of this year. I am delighted that this process has come to a good end. I am very encouraged by the interest that the city is showing in the property and the work that they're planning on doing. They can see what needs to be done, and the determination to get it done sooner rather than later is very impressive to me. The Camrio Ranch property, as you all know, I hope, is a very, very special place. The one thing I've learned in the time I've spent there is it's kind of magical. It's Camrio in a nutshell. It's the history of Camrio. It's the values of Camrio. And so I would like to invite everyone in the community to come to the property, to enjoy it, and to learn from it. We are having an event on Saturday, on Sunday this week, the 27th, which is a celebration of Adolfo Camrio's birthday. We've, the foundation has done that every year for many years. I believe he would have been 155 this year. I can tell you his spirit lives strong on the property. Okay, I'm almost done.
You got a minute.
So hopefully, many of you will be able to join us. It is from 12 to 4 at the ranch. And I think I speak for the foundation as a whole when I say that we look forward to a stronger partnership with the city for the benefit of the Camrio Ranch and the city going into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Your Honor, I'd like to thank Sandy for stepping up and taking over as the volunteer CEO out there. It's been a lot of extra work. Two years ago, I don't know that it's even been two years. I think she came in in the fall, and she was appointed as a board member, and as things changed, it was obvious they needed a CEO, and they didn't have money to pay one. So thank you very much for stepping up and taking on all that extra work, Sandy.
Ms. Remmey?
Sure. Ms. Remmey? Just a couple of comments. One is that I'm really pleased, in the agreement itself, in two different places, there's intent language that recognizes that the ranch is a community treasure. I'll just follow up on what Sandy said, and I just want to read it because I think it's important. "The foundation will provide for the property to continue to be a focal point of the community, for educational enrichment and enjoyment, and to exhibit the legacy of Adolfo Camrio, along with the diversity, history, and culture of the city through tours, programming, and related activities." I think that really kind of says it all in terms of manifesting that it's a community treasure. Secondly, I would like to thank a whole lot of folks. I'd like, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Charlotte, and you, Sean, for your service on, with the CRF on the board as our representatives to the board, I'll use that term, to city staff, who has done a really extraordinary job of shepherding this through and working through it, and Carmen, Jeanie, and Tolly, and a lot of other folks, Dave, a lot of other folks. And finally, real thanks go out to you, Jerry, for all of your service for all of these years, and your devoted service to Camrio as well, as well as to you, Sandy. I'm lucky because I've been privileged to serve with both of you on a different nonprofit organization, and I know how hard you work, and I know that it is in your soul, and I think I bear some responsibility, Sandy, for you being on that board for a couple of years. So.
You were on the committee that appointed her.
I was. So I so appreciate the efforts of you and of your colleagues on the board, so thank you very much.
Any other comments before I, Ms. Santangelo?
I basically want to share the gratitude that Mr. Tremly just shared, but I would like to thank everybody on the foundation board and the docents, who are so committed to the home and its, its culture and the educational aspects of it for our kids. I need to thank the staff because there was, this was no easy feat, you know? It was real particular to get multiple agreements, so I know there was a lot of hard work. And also Charlotte and Sean, because you were, you were helpful, not only being at all the meetings and the ad hoc meetings, but, but helping to share information with all of us as we move forward with this. So I'm, I'm really happy that it's worked out this way, and I, I hope we can look to the future and, and great things with, with the ranch house.
Mr. Millet, anything?
Yeah, all right, well, I'll just echo the thanks, both the CRF board and the ad hoc committee members. Charlotte, thank you. I know we put in a lot of time. This is a long time coming. I want to thank city staff, Jeanie, Carmen. You have been excellent. Our city manager has been on point, along with our city attorney. This was, a lot of people pulled quite a bit of weight, respectively, to get this done, and I appreciate all those efforts. I think this is good for both the CRF, it's good for the city, it's good for, most importantly, it's good for that property, and, and I think this is just another element, in addition to what we approved two weeks ago, that creates a more sustainable framework moving forward that will ensure the CRF can continue and double down on their mission in providing the history and, and the community out there at the ranch, and really help them preserve that. The city can be responsible for taking care of the nuts and bolts of the day-to-day, maintenance of the property, and we can do so in what I would, what I think will be a sustainable way. And I think that's, I think it's going to be terrific. So I am very much in support of this.
All right, let me, I just want to make one comment. One of the prerogatives of the mayor is, the mayor gets to make a recommendation to the council on committee assignments. And when that came before me, and I put Mrs. Craven and Mr. Millet on this committee, having no idea that it was going to take the amount of time that it's taken, and the good news for me so far is, my understanding is, both of them are still speaking to me. So that's a good thing. I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the foundation board. I always kind of think that it's, it's not always where you start, but the important part is where you finish. And I think we finished in a really good situation for all parties here and for the future of the ranch and the future of the city's support with this. And the staff, staff members were great on this. We have, I can't say enough superlatives about our staff here, and this is one of the, you know, shiny examples of that. So those are my comments, and I'll bring it back to anybody that, a motion?
I was going to make a motion.
Sure, I'll second with a comment.
Okay.
So with, with thanks to everyone involved, including the docents, and thank you for mentioning that, Susan, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the proposed agreement regarding use of Camrio Ranch after the agreement has been executed by the foundation.
I'll second, and I have a comment.
Proceed, please.
Their, their, their task is to preserve and to educate, and one of the ways they educate is by giving school tours. And at the last meeting, they handed out a little book that they have had for several years, but they've updated it, and it goes to each student that tours the ranch. And so the teachers bring their classes in, and they have a take-home, and it's a very nice book with a good cover. It has the white horse on it. And inside are activities to help teach them more once they get home or refresh their recollections. So my grandson goes to school in Newberry Park, and he was telling me about how his school took him to the Stagecoach Inn, and they learned about how schools operated in the past. And I said, "So did they give you a workbook to take home, Trevor, when you finished?" And he said, "No." I said, "Well, look, if your school had been in Camrio, you could have gotten a book like this." And he looked at it, and he said, "Can I have this? I, I know about that ranch. I want to learn about the book." So, good job.
Okay, so there's a motion, there is a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that's going to get us back to Item 5 Finance. It's a resolution establishing adoption fiscal year 2019-20 Ranch Enterprise Fund budget. Do we have a staff report on that? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. So what you have before you today is a resolution to establish and adopt the fiscal year 1920 Camrio Ranch Enterprise Fund, and we will also be amending the Camrio Ranch Facilities Fund. As we recently discussed, there is a new business model for the Camrio Ranch operations effective November 1st. The city will be responsible for the maintenance of the property and operational expenses. The Camrio Ranch Foundation will continue to have use of the property for its nonprofit activities. And Command Performance will manage the venue rental activities and provide the city with fee revenues to cover maintenance and operating costs. So what this means for the budget is currently, the city maintains some of the maintenance and operations of the facility of the Camrio Ranch, and at this time, we are going to be requesting to amend that budget. So in effect, the facility fund will cease to exist after October 31st, and we will be setting up the enterprise fund. So what that means is we've needed, need to reduce the budget that was originally adopted with the fiscal year 1920 budget, with the annual budget. So we will adjust the revenues to approximately $4,000, which, which is, represents interest for that fund. We will be adjusting our operating expenditures at, from $300,000 to $62,000. Again, we're looking at what our actual expenses would be at, through October 31st. Additionally, we will transfer the remaining fund balance, or basically net position, from this fund to the enterprise fund, and essentially close out this fund as of October 31st. We will then establish the enterprise fund, and what an enterprise fund means is essentially that the, the operating revenues of the activity are intended to fund the operating cost of that activity. So for the first year, we're looking at revenues, which include interest income, catering commissions, ceremony fees, security service fees, and rental site rental fees, or venue site rental fees, of $186,000 is what we're estimating. Again, that is not a full year. This is eight months of activity for this site, and we are looking at transfers in, again, from that facility fund of $1.47 million, for an overall revenues and transfers of $1.66 million. Staff did evaluate the costs for eight months of activity for that site at $347,000. Just a reminder that we're anticipating operating expenses of about $420,000 annually. I, I believe this figure's slightly higher, just, there are some initial costs that have been included or incorporated for some deferred maintenance that is going to be implemented as soon as the, the new model takes, takes hold, and the city becomes fully responsible for the operating and maintenance cost of that facility. So in the end, what we will have is the newly established fund. It will have an ending fund balance or net position of $1.3 million. Again, just over a million of that is restricted, again, capital assets not available, and unrestricted fund balance of about $233,000. unrestricted fund balance of about $233,000. That, again, we will be implementing this fund effective November 1. So at this time, there is a need to adopt a resolution establishing and approving the fiscal year 1920 and '20 of Camarillo Ranch Enterprise Fund budget, and then amend the fiscal year 1920 Camarillo Ranch Facility Fund budget. I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions at this time? Ms. Santangelo?
Jeanie, I'm not sure if this is a question for you, or maybe Carmen knows better, but is it expected that for the first year, operating this way, that there are going to be some added costs?
Yes, the number that Jeanie showed up on one of the slides for the eight-month period is trends slightly higher because there are some one-time costs to bring back maintenance to an acceptable level. So in the second year, or the full fiscal year 2021, we expect that we will not have those costs. It'll be ongoing maintenance. So we are seeing a higher trend this year for that eight-month period. Also, with the revenues, we are expecting less revenues for this current eight-month period. If you recall at the meeting where the council approved the contract with Command Performance, the revenue sharing the venue rental fee for events that are, that were reserved by the ranch, but that will be, I'm sorry, let me start that again. So for any event where the foundation made the reservation through October 31, where they made the reservation, the ranch keeps the deposit, which is 50% of the venue rental fee. Command Performance then will, they will be the ones that will support that event, and so they will receive the balance of the fee, or that's the second part of the venue rental fee. So for the first, for those events, then, the city will not be receiving that revenue. That changes over in the next fiscal year 2021. So the revenues also are trending lower in this eight-month period than they will in the 2021 period.
Any other questions? Mr. Mulchay?
Yeah, and Jeanie, from what we had discussed two weeks ago, when we adopted the agreement with Command Performance, we had some projections as to what the revenue would be that would thus go to this new enterprise fund, and I know it exceeded $300,000, and projection, it was projected over time to approach $400,000. I know it's all estimates, and the owner of Command Performance has said that he was pretty confident in those numbers and that they were conservative. So, yeah, as we rev in, I think, you know, they book everything about 12 months out on average. So after a 12-month cycle, we should see more of the true revenue and ramifications of this whole new agreement, and it should, from the way the numbers have been projected, should cover, or should approach, if not exceed, these ongoing operational expenses.
That's correct.
Any other, anybody? All right, what's, well
I'll move the suggested action.
Second.
It's a motion to second. Any further discussion here, you none? Please vote. That passes unanimously.